I'll to order the business meeting of the Tennessee firefighting commission for November 4th. Excuse me, the work session of business meeting. Uh, we just hit some highlights and then we'll adjourn and move to our regular business meeting. So things that might, I have a question because I know east, west and middle, we've all completed our audits now. Are there any findings that we need to, that will snag approving these audit reports? I know in middle, we didn't have any, east.
No, we didn't have any.
And then west, I mean, yeah, west, no. Uh, I do know that we might have to carry some, a few of these will need to, uh, pull out. Cause we audited Franklin, Brentwood and Oswald, so I have to abstain from those. Any other departments that y'all represent or have a conflict of interest with? Those would be the only three we need to pull out, Franklin.
No, mine.
Yeah, Cory.
Martin.
Yeah.
Martin, that's right. Want to do everything as transparent as possible. You didn't do that audit, right?
Clarksville as well, but you did that.
Harksville, okay, yeah, Rocksville. Yeah. Yeah, and he, he got drawn. I promise that wasn't on purpose. It was, it was random. I'm not really drawing these. Uh, so the audit should be, when we get to those, we'll need to pull those departments. This, the rest, we can do as batches without any problem.
How do we have it listed right now on the?
Agenda. We've got under new business, well, we have, east is already done. They did theirs in July, actually. They were way ahead of the curve. So, uh, west Tennessee is A under new business and middle Tennessee is B. So those two will do that.
Well, that's where we'd have to break them down.
Yeah, when, when we make a motion.
Yeah.
As we read them all.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see, there was another. Mayor Beth, you just want to wait till the main meeting? You think we should debate this now?
Up to you guys.
I think debate it now.
We're doing it now, so. The rules hearings are for the EIP that went, went into effect July 1st. But we've had several subcommittee rule hearings since then to even further. Uh, in this case, it's not tweak, it's a radical rewrite of all, of educational incentive program for all. But it's been, because of our, some discovery by our new accreditation, do I need to do that?
That's it. If you, if you hear.
Hey, so I need that, Mike? Oh, that's too much, Mike. At least, I have a voice for radio. So our new accreditation manager, they've been to a couple of accreditation conferences already. And they've discovered some things in the new rule rewrite that we've got to correct. Before we send this to the secretary general, I mean, attorney general's office, right?
That's correct.
Secretary of state.
That's correct.
I'm mixing offices. So there's a couple of ways and, and Mayor Beth probably is better explaining this, that we can handle this. One being we could reactivate the rule subcommittee or we could let her office do the rewrite then. But she's probably better explaining this.
Well, Chairman, we, we haven't put the subcommittee to rest yet.
Well, we took a, we've taken a break. We haven't met in a few months. No, it's not, I mean, it's the same committee, it's just inactive.
So, so certainly we could start having subcommittee meetings again, um, and make sure that this is thorough and, and, and done. Um, before presenting it to the commission again, um, and then having the commission vote a second time to send it for routing. And which then eventually would get us to that rulemaking hearing. Um, the faster way to do it, and it's up to you guys, so that would be what I would call the more thorough way. The faster way to do it would for, be for you guys to vote today to just allow us to open the additional chapters and, um, uh, subsections that we need to open to make the changes that accreditation has suggested, um, our requirement for remaining accredited. Um, and then what we could do is go ahead and file that rulemaking hearing. And you guys would have been the 52 days for public comment, editing, feedback, and we could kind of hash it all out in that rulemaking hearing. Um, it, it's completely up to you guys and you can discuss amongst yourselves during, in the open meeting, what you want to do. I, I had Laura email you the accreditation related suggested changes. The only thing that would, there's a few that are probably things that the commission needs to discuss. But the only things that we went in and reopened and changed were things that we felt like were completely necessary in order to remain accredited by pro board and IFSAK. Um, or like there was one place where the commission was listed as the Tennessee Fire Commission in the rules and it needed to be spelled out appropriately. So we opened a subsection for that. It was spelled out, it just said Tennessee Fire Commission in, in chapter six or four. And we were just like, that has to be fixed. Um, but most of it is through accreditation related issues.
So. So right now, our whole rewrite that we did is closed because it's already been filed.
So we did not file it with the secretary of state. We put it into routing and it was pulled from routing upon discovery of basically what we were going to send would put us out of compliance with the accrediting bodies.
Right, well, chapter six, we already opened.
We opened chapter six, we haven't opened, uh, we need to open chapter one, um, to define accreditation. Uh, we didn't have accreditation defined in the rules anywhere. Um.
Well, isn't chapter two definitions?
I'd have to look, but maybe it's chap, maybe I meant chapter two. Uh, there are also additional subsections that our general counsel said that like if we open chapter six, um, we opened the, some subsections, but not all of them. Um, and so the committee, the commission have to vote to agree to allow us to open those additional subsections. Also in chapter three and four, there were some accreditation related issues that we had proposed such as writing practical slash projects. We've actually found out from pro board that if we use the word projects, that's going to put us out of compliance with pro board. Um, so just some bigger decisions that we didn't want to blindside you guys with. And, and that we don't feel like we could legally open without the commission's permission.
So my first concern is in our last rule rewrite, it took us two and a half years.
That's correct.
Okay, two and a half years. And when we did this one, we wanted to keep this condensed as simple as possible so we can move it through as quick as possible. Is that still the goal here? Because I, I don't want the, the fixes that we put into this change right now are things that need to get moved and get done before as quick as possible, basically.
I mean, yeah, the target's still 2027 and we're too late for 26 for, from an educational incentive submission program. But I mean, we were targeting 27 and that, my personal belief is let them, most of this is language cleanup, not substantive change. And if she, and if she makes a substantive change, we have 52 days to follow.
Yeah.
A written response.
Well, then also anything that comes out can be rule hearing for public comment at that time as well.
Certainly, and we can tear the rules off at, at the red line phase and in the rulemaking hearing. Uh, and we can have, that would give the public plenty of time to put in their written comments or, or public comments as well. Uh, and I don't want you guys to feel like this was like me. This was a, a group of, of the accreditation manager, the former director, uh, the team decided that we didn't want to pass rules that would put the commission out of, out of compliance with our crediting bodies.
No. Yeah, no, definitely.
But we need to add this as a voting item to the agenda.
Certainly, what, the, the process in which the commission would like to handle moving forward needs to be decided.
I'm keeping track.
Okay, somebody, somebody, that's the third item.
Yeah.
All right. I was not at the July meeting, so any of y'all, and I think this would be so much better if we sent it to Laura ahead of time. But if you had a, if you found something off in the minutes, so we're not, not approving when we get to the meeting. Uh, that would really streamline that and for her too. There were much, at least what I could tell, a lot more detail this time.
Yes.
Uh, but just thinking about the minutes, because we don't want to get hung up in that. We're at the meetings, I don't think I've said that before. The only thing I found in all the, we have now three items. We have a letter from the firemen's association, a letter from Cobble Fire Department and to take action on the rulesmaking process. To add to the agenda once we start the business meeting. I think those are the three. Um, yes.
Is that correct? Sure.
I found one which in, uh, it's the, uh, rope rescue operator course. When we get to that in a minute, or in, in the actual agenda, they have a disconnect. Their, their agenda, their actual daily agenda shows a four day class. Uh, day four of Blue Bowl, whatever, that practical team based, and all of their overview says it's a five day course. There's discrepancy, I don't know if there's anybody here from that, maybe somebody knows this organization. But they've got a four day agenda and their overview says it's a five day class. It's only 30 hours, so that'd be a five days, a short five days. This, my OCD, this discrepancies always, they, they go hard.
Right.
And I don't know, again, it may, it may not be somebody here from that organization today saying we don't. I just didn't know if anybody had familiarity with this rescue three.
Is anyone on teams representing them?
Again, I just trying to speed up to actual business meeting, okay?
And they may not be here because Dan, we, we, they had that death, uh, their, their guy this past week. So they may not be here at all.
Okay.
That's from Washington County in east Tennessee.
Maybe it's an hour day.
Four, 10 hours?
Yeah.
But it says it's a 30 hour course, five days right here. But then the agenda is not, it's four days with no hours.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not a showstopper, but. Yeah, submit it correct. Yeah, put it, yeah, which is, is it five days or is it four days?
Great.
And you would think the operator class would be shorter than the tech, their technician class is shorter than their operator class, which seems usually, don't you go awareness ops tech? Yeah, and I'm, I'm, I'm not in it anymore, so.
Oh, yeah, no, you're right.
I'm just thinking to what I thought I remembered. Okay. All right, anybody else have any other thoughts for the work session with things that, oh, I guess the biggest, the other big, let's just go ahead and debate now what's the meeting made changes. Next meeting, the day, future date of next meeting? That always seems to take the longest.
Uh, next meeting would be?
January or?
January, February, March, we do it with the fire chiefs.
Yeah, we said we weren't going to always do that. I'm opposed to Jackson.
As we say, if we do Jackson at the same time, that their meeting.
Yeah, it's, uh, February, I think I've got it here.
They're picking future dates.
Future dates, yeah, I'm trying, it's always a, a joy to set those. I didn't write it down yet.
I'm looking.
Yeah, it's out there.
Yeah. February 4th to the 6th. In Jackson, at the Doubletree.
So.
Do we need to have a two day meeting?
I don't know that we need to do.
Where does 52 days fall in?
We're nowhere close to knowing that.
Okay.
It won't matter.
And do we want to do a workshop at one on the second and our meeting on the third at nine?
Would you say it's, I'm sorry?
On the second, at what time, one o'clock?
One, allow for travel.
Yeah.
And then a meeting at nine.
That'd be good for me.
Well, now the fire chiefs don't start till the fourth.
Yeah.
Right.
We can just do everything on that third if you want.
Yeah, I'm, I'm. Y'all are asking.
Let's, let's, they don't start until noon on the?
On the fourth, yeah.
Yeah. So we have our meeting on the fourth at nine. We do our work session on Tuesday.
Yeah, afternoon.
That'd be good.
Yeah, all right. And zero nine. Say that again, David. Uh, work session at one o'clock on the third. Business meeting at nine o'clock on the fourth and fire chiefs to start. For those that have to stay.
So Tuesday and Wednesday?
Tuesday and Wednesday. And we'll talk to you, normally we're at the Madison County building, but we'll.
The Doubletree.
We can meet at the, yeah, we can meet at the Doubletree, probably gone, need to check with James.
Mondays are just hard.
Mondays are hard, payroll, broken jobs, you name it.
Anyway. Mr. Wondro, there's two other matters the commission may have to vote on, that would be coming out of my report.
Okay.
One of them will be that the individual we were going to have the formal hearing for, um, has agreed to surrender all of his previous certifications. He's also agreed to not participate in any firefighting commission program moving forward. Um, so the commission will just need to vote to accept that surrender.
Wait, wait.
Accept the surrender of certifications.
And he agreed to what with the commission?
To fully surrender, um, all of his previous certifications and to not participate in any commission programs moving forward. So that's going to be, uh, the EIP, EIP, uh, testing or any other commission sponsored firefighting program.
Ever? Title level or ever?
Nope.
He signed a paper that says ever.
Ever.
He could certainly appear, appear and ask for some kind of waiver, but he, he understands that that he would have to come in front of the commission and that the answer could be no.
So my question though is, and Greg, you might be able to answer this. If he has surrendered to us his certifications and surrendered participating in accreditation moving forward, can he go to Alabama? Can he go to Kentucky? Can he go to North Carolina and go do this? So there's nothing that's in place with the accrediting organizations that we can.
But I'm okay with him not coming back to Tennessee.
He used to be in Oxford, yeah.
So just a follow up question on that reciprocity now. He goes and gets these from Alabama or wherever, can he file reciprocity with us?
Good, yes. If there's some people action taken where he is suspended, then there would need to be in our communication, a flag for that individual that says no reciprocity. They should not put that in, they should, that needs to be put in.
So now the question is, is there a process in the CADIS that we can flag? Okay.
And I think we can inform IFSAK that he surrendered in our jurisdiction. We can send them a memo that says that.
I was going to be wondering, yes, to notify. And in their registry, they'll make a note for the fact that they're working, they're no longer eligible for those. And where, if who's kind of raised some flags, say Alabama does check for reciprocity and goes, that's a big, very common showing that this is disvaluable and they go, then they, you have a, you kind of get some of that, or why this, you know, the doubt, whoever has certifications that are no longer valuable.
Greg, come get us, Michael.
Yeah, because.
We need to be on the record. Are you asking a question in a, certainly doesn't, he does, he shows legal to their licenses.
Well, yes. Uh, but I also want to make sure that we have processes in place that they can't circumvent. And if they're going to, if basically what he had said was he's giving up a career in fire service in the state of Tennessee by surrendering this and, and agreeing to expulsion, basically, of the fire commission.
Certainly, so, so he's agreed to everything that you guys could have come up with at the, at the formal decertification hearing. So worst case scenario for him at the decertification hearing is the language I put into his order that he signed. Uh, what we have in a CADIS is the ability to flag that he's been, um, I don't know if decertified is the right word, but that he's, he's subjected himself to this surrender. Um, and then we'll carry through with the IFSAK and pro board notifications. We don't have jurisdiction outside of the state of Tennessee, but, but any and everything you guys could have taken from him, the order he signed, um, contains that language.
Yeah, like I said, I just wanted to make sure that his CADIS account can be flagged. Because I know we had issues with that previous when we were, uh, combined with Pletta. So just want to make sure that those options are now available to where if somebody goes ahead and pulls his account into their fire department, it's not showing these things as being active.
Certainly, and now that the, uh, CADIS accounts are separate from law enforcement, there shouldn't be any issues with marking his account as inactive um, and, and flagging it appropriately. The one other matter that, um, my legal report's going to contain is, um, the policies and procedures document that the firefighting commission has, um, has never been reported to the legislature. And a lot of it has been, um, kind of a living document since like 2002 and has, um, the rules have come in and kind of usurped a lot of it. Um, so that kind of makes the, the appropriate time to start working on getting that into a reported standard operating procedure for the legislature, as well as take out the things that have been usurped by rules. Um, so I've sent an initial markup of that to the commission. Um, but just discussing how y'all would like to move forward, whether you want to open a subcommittee or put send that to the rule subcommittee or let legal propose a draft and then we can work it out in the next meeting. However, you guys see fit. Um, we've already started putting some things into standard operating procedure, such as the conflict of interest forms and things like that.
So there's a difference between policy guidelines, right? Uh, guidelines are much more flexible, whereas policy is stone. And right now, where we're coming into a lot of trouble within the commission office is rules and there's no flexibility. If we do a policy, we're, we're not having that flexibility. So what is it that we're really looking at?
So most of it has been brought into the rules. A, a lot of what you guys have written, uh, affects outside parties, so it, it can't be a policy under the law. Um, so we've moved a lot of it into the rules. What's left is, um, the, one of the things to discuss will be that there's a, and I think Heather's mentioned this before, a regulation on how many questions a commission test can have. Um, that is running into a few issues with our accrediting bodies. So we would just ask commission to, um, allow us to make an official standard operating procedure on that, um, with, in working with Greg. Um, those official standard operating procedures can be modified fairly easily, um, as the commissions will move one way or the other or the accrediting bodies' rules move one way or the other. Um, the conflict of interest policy that's in there has now become a standard operating procedure that's auditable under our comp control. Or you guys signed that paperwork today. Um, and then there's a few things like adopting Robert's rules of order and the mission and vision statements, things that we can certainly put on the website or, or say that we care about, but it's not something that's ever been reported to the legislature or has ever become official. And I just want to make sure the will of the commission is official and documented and, and that we're not going off of an outdated document, um, that hasn't been at least reviewed and, and, um, that the commission's will is to keep what they want to keep and to get rid of what they want to get rid of. So that we can certainly discuss that more in a subcommittee or, um, bring it back to you guys. But I just would like, based off of kind of where we are with all the rules and stuff, to get you guys the most updated, freshest version of a policy and procedures document. Okay.
Yeah, but some of those are from 1992 that are.
I would call it a living document, um, at, at the minimum. It has, um, certainly has directors con, ad lib commentary under some of the rules. I mean, it, it certainly has room for clarification, if not improvement.
I just thought it was as a policy.
Anything else for discussion during the work session?
Yes, please. So it was brought to my attention, we've now distributed our wildland one and two firefighting test across the state again. However, we haven't set a, uh, I think we discussed, it's probably been not tested over the last 120 days roughly. So we need to set some type of time perimeter of what we're going to allow these people to go back. Are we going to go 60 days from today they happen to take their firefighter, or they go wildland two test or? Because I have people, specifically my department, Franklin, that are asking about taking those tests again. And now they've been redistributed, so they want to start taking those tests. So are we going to go a case by case basis or do we want to make a blanket statement or? Um, that's something that we probably need to discuss as far as, uh, because we don't want them like next July trying to take their wildland two.
Any thoughts? All right, I'll put it on the agenda.
Well, we don't have a lot of waiting periods, you know?
We took out all waiting periods, but it's not until the next role package comes out. So there's still 30 day waits and, and what have you.
Yeah, because I mean, we're letting a lot of things stand for 10 years now.
Yeah.
So, and again, I don't want to, I don't want to deny any of these people the opportunity to take this test. They've, they've done the work and I'll just speak for myself. I actually had to go back through because I didn't take either one of my written for the first time I went through it. So I had to go back through and do all the JPRs with this last class that we just had to go through. So I'm reset to do it.
It's technically on our projects. Right, projects. Uh, there's a one year from the time that the projects turned in that you have the test.
Correct.
So.
And I'm, I'm specifically just talking about the, the ones that have already taken the one or attempted the one. Then we suspended the testing events period. Um, so there may be a few of them that attempted the one, wildland firefighter one and didn't pass it. So now they should be able to attempt that again.
So question to legal, Mayor Beth. Can we go ahead and make a motion to extend for this one certifications? Do a 12 month extension on their practical for testing?
I don't think that that's waivable under the rules. Um, I think that, and Greg, you may feel differently, I think that maybe there's a way we can. What's the thing you said about when the standard changes that you test? The thing you said, we're talking about where the standard changes and you took the class, but then you test under a different standard.
So when the standard changes essentially, you know what I'm talking about? Second, the whole work that we've been through with the new edition, anything in the past, it's essentially no longer valid. Because we're not testing that anymore, we're not certifying that anymore. And we surely can't issue a new standard certification off of an old standard's training. Um, IFSAK just voted in order to say they just send about 50 certifications that they were doing that. Now can you create like a bridge course that says, hey, these two things were in the old standard or these two new things were in the new standard, so we'll take the training that they did is still good training for. You, you take some kind of a, an abandonment class to that to take the new boxes. And then you're eligible to test for the new certification because you have a depth of net follow of what it is.
Okay, so these people that have taken the class, but they missed out on 120 days of opportunities to test is the only option to just have them test within that one year? So, my understanding, these people took the class.
They did.
And they have missed out on the first 120 days of opportunity to test.
No, ma'am, they have actually, some of them may have, or they've attempted to. It's my understanding that they've either, A, they can fire, uh, wildland firefighter one and pass it and they're waiting to take two.
Okay.
Or they've attempted wildland firefighter one and they didn't pass it. Now they want to take that test again. And I'm not sure, Greg, did we change the standard? Because when we reviewed the JPRs, there were some that actually, we had taught that JPR and it's no longer there. So they actually took a, a JPR that we don't even require anymore. But we got them the new JPRs with this second test. So even those people that took it a year ago, they technically took more JPRs than they're required now.
Things came out of the standard.
Right.
That, that not were added. In that sense, the training would still be valid because they did beat JPRs.
So no one has a deficit of JPRs?
That is correct, ma'am.
Okay, so I think they would, under our current rule, they would just have to test within the one year. they would just have to test within the one year.
So my question is, is we suspended that time because the test wasn't out there for 120 days. So are we adding that 120 days from today? And that's what we're going to move forward and say you have a 120 day extension to attempt one or your two again? Because they're still falling within that time parameter is my question.
Because it wasn't on them as the student. It was us as the entity.
Yes, ma'am.
So 120 days from when the test was available.
That would be my recommendation to add to it, yes. If not further, because again, we didn't, we didn't add JPRs, ma'am. We actually took JPRs away. So the previous, I, I'm going to use myself for example. I didn't get to test the first time. So I knew this being on the commission. So I went back through this class that we just held back in August. And I did their JPRs for three days. I went and physically redid them again. So I have checked off JPRs again. I didn't sit through the PowerPoint side of stuff because I had done that before. Okay?
So when did the test become available again? I think it could be a year from the day the test became available.
I think that that's admirable, absolutely. If everybody's in agreeance.
Probably a program decision ultimately, but I can fill off the interpretive.
Thank you very much, ma'am.
That would make sense. You can't penalize.
Yes, ma'am, absolutely. That's why I thought, yeah. Thank you. Greg, thank you.
We may yell at me for that, but that's how I interpret the rule.
Thanks, ma'am.
Getting ideas. And we will make sure that once we get voted whatever on that, that our coordinators get that out to the.
I think that that would be a good solution for the problem. Is the commission office causing the problem?
Thank you, Mary Beth.
Another workshop business. Excuse me. So we're in the workshop and we'll convene the business meeting at 9:45. Eight minutes ish. This I got to be. A business meeting for the Tennessee Firefighting Commission for November 4th, 2025 will be led in prayer by Commissioner Green and the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Henry.
Let's stand, please. Let us pray. Most gracious and loving heavenly Father, we're thankful for everything you do in our life, Lord. We're Lord, we're thankful for a safe trip here, Lord, to convene the business of the state. And Lord, we just ask that you just give us clear minds and a good judgment as we make decisions that affect the firefighters of the state as we move forward, Lord. Lord, we just ask you to be with our families as we're away from them, take care of them and watch over and protect them. Lord, we just ask you to continue to bless this great state of Tennessee and the firefighters and the personnel that work every day to protect it. Lord, just be with us as we go through the rest of this meeting and as we travel home to our loved ones. We love you, Lord. We're so thankful for you. Amen.
Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unbroken, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Green. Thank you. Commissioner Henry. We have all nine commissioners present. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda is approval of minutes for April, July 29, 2025. Entertaining motion?
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner. Scott and seconded by Commissioner Henry. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, like sign. And it's pass. Any announcements? I don't think so. Not that we won't cover. Also, if you didn't have a chance to sign up yet and you would, you would like to sign up the signup sheet, I think everybody wanted to. And it looks like everybody that's got business has checked yes. So we'll, we'll get to those as we come to their agenda item, believe.
Commissioner Windrow?
Yes, sir.
Are we going to take any people from the teams portion that would like to also address us and add them to that list?
If she, I guess if she, if there are someone.
So we can just say that if anybody from teams wants to sign up for a public comment, that they could raise their hand or put something in the chat.
Okay.
Yeah, if you want to speak on teams, raise your hand and put a question in the chat. I don't know how many, um, there'll be some.
Here's number one.
First question. Any other announcements? We will have to add items to the agenda next. I just want to thank the staff, Laura and the staff here. I know it's been, there's been some changes around this building the last few months. Appreciate the hard work and I appreciate all the commissioners getting the, we are done with our audits before October, well, okay, November 1st. But we're done, our head of schedule this year, which is gets it off our plate and gets it off of, it's the comptroller doesn't give us any problems. We're done with audits. And I appreciate that. We do have one guest.
Well, I, I.
You want to go ahead and do the agenda?
I'll do the add-ons, but before we do that, I do want to say a special thank you to Director Laura right now for stepping in and doing what you've been doing. The things that you've incorporated here in the late, especially with the shared drive, making things easier for us, handling the day to day operations like a champ. Thank you. Thank you, thank you. It's, it's most appreciated from all of us. And I just, I wanted to recognize you for that.
All right. Entertain adding items to the agenda.
Are you ready?
Yes, no, yes.
Make a motion to add letter M to the agenda. It's going to be a waiver for Kabul Fire Department for the VEIP waiver. They missed the deadline for October 1st. Also, the letter N for the Tennessee Firemen's Association for exam review. The letter O to reopen rules to update accreditation. Letter P to accept their surrender from legal. Letter Q for policy update. And then the letter R for Wildland Fire test extension, one year per date.
Make a motion to add those six items?
Just do it again.
Q was the policy update.
I'm seconded.
Seconded by Commissioner Green. Any discussion? All those in favor adding those six items to the agenda? If you can find by saying aye. Those opposed, like sign. Guys have it, those items are added. Next on the agenda, we do have a guest that's us to address the commission, Deputy Fire Marshal Biglo. I believe that's Metro Fire. Yes, you want to come up? Jeff will find you a microphone.
There it is.
There it is. Oh, he's got one.
All right.
And then once we discuss, the commission was updating the, we're changing the prerequisites for the Fire Instructor One classification. Currently it states that it follows the NFA 1041 standard Fire Charter. But it also requires for the commission, basic firefighter, firefighting certification for us in the Fire Marshal Office. And actually, we have several individuals that are interested in continually professional development for the fire service. And one of those avenues that I'm interested in thinking is you have a Fire Instructor Certification. But without having the basic firefighting certification, it's something that's not accessible for us. So if we were to stick with the NFA 1041 standard, it does have a firefight requirement there. So that was our request. If we could update that to include or to exclude the firefighting requirement so that that could be accessible more to not just the firefighting side, but also the prevention side.
And I would need clarity from Greg. I thought we had addressed, we talked about this before.
We did talk about it before.
And it was required by, and I may be very wrong, the federation standard. So that's a great question.
So as far as Fire Instructor One, there's no requirement as far as needing to meet a prerequisite as far as another standard. There's no requirement in 1041 to have the whole firefighter one or two. There's no requirement to hold anything. That doesn't mean you as a commission can't impose a prerequisite or requirement like the requirement to have a firefighter. If it's a state, it's a state policy, then it's as good as the department. Now, I'll throw a little blurb in here real quick. As far as the evaluator stuff, that we'll talk about in a little while goes, I would almost recommend if it's a standalone certification that does not have a prerequisite like hazmat for or operator, hazmat for firefighter, if it's a standalone certification, there's potential to have an avenue to earn their instructor one to be able to and or end up practical skills.
So let's address this real quick. First, in Nashville, your fire prevention specialist, whatever you call them, they're wanting this IFSEC certificate, correct? They took the class. They want to have this certificate that says, hey, we took it. As an AHJ, you can recognize any training that is done. If they have somebody who took the Fire Instructor One course in Nashville, your AHJ, per your standard operating guidelines, can recognize them as Fire Instructor Ones within your department. Okay? When it comes to teaching classes outside of your department, they're considered subject matter experts. So with that, with their resume, with what their backing is, it allows them to teach a fire prevention class to Mount Juliet or to Portland or Hendersonville. Where we have a holdup with this is Fire Instructor One is a prerequisite for a fire officer. So if we go ahead and issue Instructor One certifications to anyone without firefighting experience, now what's that look like for us on the backside when it comes to officer? Officer one, two, three, four, because of that being a prerequisite for that? So.
I completely understand that. But with the Fire Officer, having a firefighter two, that was this, that's something that we recognize. It's a little bit different for it than it would be for just something as a fire instructor. And while as the AHJ, we can recognize that certification, the the way the validation that comes from having a state certification is something that is really a value position that people are wanting to continue to professionally develop, professionally develop by getting those certifications from state.
All right, so I guess the value in it that I'm looking for from you is they get the Instructor One. What's their next step? Because they don't need Instructor One to get Public Life Safety Educator. Because Public Life Safety Educator is pretty much the same thing as Instructor One on the prevention side. So I'm trying to understand where, what direction is it that they want to go once they get Instructor One for their, for their development?
This, and this is my understanding of it. I mean, all of this is, if in order to teach those outside of the fire safety educator, where the one citizen is coming into national parks, but continue to teach some of those if you're an instructor for those practices that are coming in the ways that those are, that's changing for officers that that would be.
But that's, once again, we're a subject matter expert. Trump's it, right? If you're a subject matter expert in it, then a class certificate from Nashville Parks saying that I took this class is just as good. So. Yes.
Go back to the evaluation piece. Obviously that discussion, they will think what's in record. To their point, for somebody in Nashville to be able to become an evaluator based off of what I put together. And I understand that that's up for discussion. However, you all want that for, I'm just basing it off of the foundation. But if somebody in their department wants to become an evaluator to test inspectors, you're now making them have to have the firefighter to be able to get their instructor, to be able to evaluate new practical skills. New inspectors moving forward.
Well, I see two other, I've heard from other entities through the years. Ryan and Timo would like to be a Fire Instructor One, just for credibility, for example, because he's very involved with fire service. Now he took a promotion, so I don't know what that looks like. Or junior college professors, I mean, I've heard from, you know, that add to their credibility, a credential, it's a credential would bolster their, you know, if they're on the agenda to teach at FDIC, if they're Fire Instructor One, their credibility goes up. I, I think we have other means to not, to answer your concern about not progressing to Fire Officer One. I mean, one, hope the chiefs don't sign their application.
Is, is, and that's what I'm going to. And twenty Fire Officer One does require.
Okay, so it's a, it's a check already.
So if you open up the options to become an Instructor One without firefighter, anything that has a prerequisite in the standard to be a firefighter is off the table for those folks that don't have it. They won't be able to jump right into the fire officer ranks without having that.
Also, I have a question for you. So in your progression, are you going to use this as part? And I'm just asking a question from y'all's standpoint. Are you going to use this as part of like a promotional process to become like an assistant fire marshal or a fire marshal? As far as like points wise, or is that going to get them anything else? Testing wise, if they try to move up the chain, so to speak?
So I don't, we are in our network through job description, voting stuff.
Okay.
All that's in evaluation right now.
Okay.
Initially, we have to have, and I think it goes back to, we understand in the whole AHJ part, it's the credibility they have.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
And there's, yeah, I mean, I want to see a few departments needing this. Memphis, Nashville, Knoxville, Franklin, Murfreesboro, Parksville, maybe. It has a fire prevention bureau that they may not want to be firefighters.
Right. But with, with that checkbox for the firefighter two with the officer, then it does negate, so. Yeah.
Yeah, they're not going to, they're not going to circumvent anything.
They can't circumvent it. So at that point, luckily, this is going to be reopening rules. So.
But I have a question. When we were going through the rules and we were looking at the different roles moving up, there was a point where we looked at Instructor One and saying that they would have to be a firefighter for at least, I believe it was three years before they could test for Fire Instructor One. And that's where I put a check into allowing people to jump through the hoops really fast. We held their Instructor One, but did not put those checks into Officer One through Officer Four, allowing AHJ to have that. What effect would that have on this?
Right there. Because right in this new rule that we wrote, it is a one year or a three year wait from the date of their firefighter one.
But they're not going to take firefighter one.
Correct. So like what Commissioner Cobb, like what Commissioner Cobb is pointing out though, is because we have this piece, so we have to look at this when we sit down in the next rule subcommittee and see how this would affect. Because if we're going with the date, is there a way? I mean, because previous, it was three years from entering the fire service. Because previous, it was three years from entering the fire service. And we realized that that was a hard date to track. And that's why we opted to put the firefighter one certification date as the starting point for that three year clock. Um, so if we open this up. On the prevention side of things. What can, what is going to be that anchor date for that piece? Because if we're going to do it for one, we got to do it for both.
Essentially, in, in the rule where it says firefighter one for three years before you can do your instructor. Whatever you decide to open up the instructor to. For another example, aside from this, is the technical rescuer side. You may have folks in East Tennessee that they're not firefighters, but. They need to know how to do swift water rescue and I understand what I was credited that, but the rope stuff. There's no requirement in one thousand six where they have to be a fire sergeant to certify that the ropes or as an technician. So if you though chose to allow the thousand six to become instructor one. Essentially, you would list out whatever is opened up to be able to be a pathway to instructor one. Firefighter. Inspector, investigator, technical rescuer, three years from those certification dates, then you can earn your instructor. Whatever number you so choose to.
So the hardest part though is going back to what is that anchor date? What can we use as an anchor date outside of fire? Because right now for, in, in this proposed rule is firefighter one is the anchor date. But if we're going to go ahead and open this up on the prevention side of things. What are we going to use as an anchor date?
I think we're going to have much as we may want to and push the, push the responsibility back to the AHJ. Their date of employment, because they're not going to take instructor one until they get fire life safety educator one, for example. I mean, but we can't, let's say we're going to open this up broader to the TEMA employee, the junior college, the police officer that wants to be a fire instructor. He's on a, like Williamson County Sheriff has a lot of swift water rescue guys, their team's as big as anybody in the county.
Yes.
They may want the credential, because there is no, to my knowledge, there is no post certification for instructor.
Or police side?
Yes, there is. Okay, so there, okay, but. So you'd have to, you'd have to go back to their start date of employment, three years. You could keep the three years. But let's don't put the burden on the office. Let's put the burden on. Franklin fire, Matoka, whoever.
Right, Nashville.
The fire, and then if they get caught, they get suspended, you know, and somebody might turn me in. If they're doing it early, that's, that's how firefighters are.
But I think with all of the, I, I think we're kind of muddying the water slightly here because once again. If we go off of three years from their employment, it's still a track that's being used, a cadence is still being used as that tracking. For that date.
Maybe not for those jobs.
Yeah.
There will be a cadence.
So what's going to stop us from making a, like a Y on the road? This your firefighter path? This your fire marshal?
Or non-fire path.
Or non-fire path, whatever you want to call it. Then not, that's perfect. Fire path, non-fire path, which includes EMA.
EMA, police, junior college.
Uh, or your, or your fire marshals, or your fire life safety educators. Why would we not want a fire life safety educator to be an instructor one?
From our IT.
Go ahead, man.
And he does.
That's exactly what we were saying.
Yeah, the AHJ would be responsible.
Why shouldn't we have that pathway? That separate pathway?
It's kind of like high school. You know, you have to make a choice in high school on classes and directions.
Technical.
Technical.
That's exactly right.
I mean, where, this is what we're talking about here, exactly.
Right, and why could we not do that?
I don't, it's not a matter of why we can't do it. It's just what is that, that anchor? That's, that's where I'm held up.
So what kind of anchor do we have for that department to say if that gentleman right there goes to fire life safety educator today, that he can't go take fire inspector tomorrow?
So that's my point though. If we utilize fire life safety educator one date. As that, that anchor. Then three years from that date, but then now we're, we brought in other disciplines, we've brought.
If we bring, I'm, I'm just saying, I've, I've been asked about that in the past.
Right, because I'm, that, that's, that's where I'm at, is we, we had such a hard time tracking that three year progression piece. Because of a cadence not being, you know, updated or, or what have you. Because that's what the office is using is a cadence.
Okay, so I guess my, my question would be, why do we have to set a date for that non-fire path? I'm just asking. Why do we have to have a date?
So what we're, what we're going to look at then is create a whole separate path in rule for the non-fire.
We, we need to. Chief just pointed that out. Yeah, we do it in the IP.
Right, special operations, technical rescue and all that.
But it currently in y'all's proposed version of the rule, it says has served for a minimum period, this is the proposed one. Of thirty-six months from the date of certification for firefighter one. Um. And this, I don't know if this solves Nashville's problem or not. But if we made fire life safety educator an alternative prerequisite firefighter. Then we could say date of certification for firefighter one or fire life safety educator. Through three years from either or. And then that way they can set their own path. Well, they don't want to take firefighter five and take fire life safety educator. Either way, you wait three years and then you can test for firefighter.
But now we threw a third caveat in there. The tech, technical rescue side. So that, and, and I'm being difficult because of these other avenues that we have already had.
I think this is going to be a growing thing because we're into so many different disciplines.
Right.
And it's just, we have to be dynamic and adapt with how everything's changing.
I have a little comment. Um, by letting someone that has no firefighting background get fire instructor one, if they would be able to teach any fire class. I would let each AHJ show that they are subject experts and only test that subject.
Just I think that would be all, they wouldn't want to embarrass themselves, I would think. They're going to, in this case, they're going to be teaching fire prevention, whether it's systems, hoods, ducts. Schools, gas stations, they're going to pick their, what they're comfortable, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not teaching fire prevention.
Or I have a police officer that's swift water one and two that wants to teach just swift water one and two. He's a subject matter expert on that, but he also holds the instructor credential.
Yeah, I think, and maybe we're right now, they can only ask for fire prevention. We, we, we hold there because we've got a lot of change going on right now. But I, I think it's something to look at down the road to further. Increase participation in the program. I, I think other, I think other disciplines would join in. Uh, not everybody. I mean, I don't think we're talking huge numbers. You're probably talking. Forty, forty-eight year tops, be mine, off the cuff guess.
But, uh, talking about technical disciplines, everything starts with rope, correct?
Could go off three years off here.
Which we're not. Adding in the future. There's not a requirement for ropes to be, if the on fasten her waters. But everything else does, like your iron wool, your water, all that stuff does have rope.
So if we went with. An anchor point of fire one. Fire life safety educator one. Rope awareness, one, rope.
Awareness or ops?
Well, that's, that's the beauty of this. It's, it's something that we discuss and, and put down, but. At that point, we can set three anchor points as that benchmark for that three year period. Because that then would allow them to become those subject matter experts in, in those different disciplines.
If you want to look. The rest of the growing, your department commissioner. When you start talking about the water rescue stuff, there, I will.
It's coming.
At least they're not living in that because we're not there, but I want to say the requirement there is focused technician.
Right, it is. You're correct. You are correct.
That could be the.
Anchor point. And to your point, Greg, it's coming. Like these disciplines are coming. These people are wanting these certifications and these things, so.
So it's good that we look at this now and not be behind that eight ball.
And then if your fire inspector wanted to be in that third caveat and be a. Whatever we want to name it, rescue specialist or whatever, then they could never be fire side. I'm, I'm not knocking any of the disciplines. I'm just saying we'd give them several different paths. Yes, sir.
I think it's good though that we just maybe moving forward, consider.
It's all your own, sir.
One is instructor methodology. So in other words, the commission is not saying. The fact that they got instructor one, they are qualified to be a fire instructor, a fire life. We're saying instructor one, they completed an instructor methodology.
Of course.
That has benchmarks, but it's already having jurisdiction in terms that qualified to teach ladders or they're qualified to teach inspectors.
Or CP. As a tool. Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Joe. We could use it as a tool. I mean, we got a lot of EMS people that do, like, why should that not be a tool for them? I have an instructor certification, therefore this is the path that I've chosen. And the fire commission accepts that.
Well, to your block, the rules back up here. So this might be sooner rather than later, but I'm going to rephrase. It's taken two, three years to get rules, but we're trying not to do that this time, so I'm trying to take the most expeditious path. I, I think, I'm hearing that the board is amenable to at least fire and life safety instructor with a three year anchor point as well. And then.
How's that look on, on, for what you guys are looking for?
Or would we want to make?
Some of them don't do it. Fire life safety educator. Chief's going to the fire safety house everywhere. He don't care about inspections.
Okay.
Alright, thank you guys.
Yeah, thanks, guys.
Alright, communications, Josh out of the west.
Uh, parts are done. Uh, we did it. Getting the proper, Danny Fowler, uh, he is active. Actually, he's done a good job, actually. Uh, going to visit within the mall to make sure that it's all booked still. Uh, and honestly, that's, that's all I'll get out of every kind of.
Steve, east.
Good morning. So, uh, I'll keep mine short as well. From the east side of our last commission meeting, I've been issued zero forty-eight private pools created at hundred and seven. Hundred and six out of hundred and seven was successful. Uh, fifty-eight courses have been approved in commission. One statistic that was a little low, and I spoke with Director Boston about this, with the possibility of. Partnering with education outreach, maybe sending out a EM, an effort product, the justice sample back. Uh, which is then going on about thirty-nine months now, and each department in the state has. I'll tell you, it's a little bit higher than what it was. Uh, we do have a new program in Tennessee, uh, in Bradhold from Clinton area. And, uh, the last thing is, uh, peer reviews for Tennessee will be this week or Friday, or Friday, apartment time.
Middle top.
Well, hold on, I have a question for Coordinator, Earl. In our. Meeting either in Gatlinburg or Cookville, because I've slept since both of them. Um, we talked about commission one oh one in East Tennessee. How many classes have been done?
Two this year, one this last year.
Okay, thank you.
Um, as you guys all know, y'all saved a few times already. The fall of the audit are officially done. Grab those up yesterday. It was mad dash last weekend, this week. We got them all done. Thank y'all. Um, it's business as usual. We've got four projects. We got two full time, two part time. We're cracking it out as busy as ever. Uh, our peer review is scheduled for November the seventeenth. And it's going to be a Clarksville fire department at nine AM. I apologize, November the eighteenth at nine AM, the fire department will be hosting again. Um, and other than that, that's all I got. Uh, we did, we had had four commission one oh ones this year. We've already got two more on the book right now. Uh, I've helped those other guys off as far as hoping that commission one oh ones, just because I wanted to get through the audits in this meeting today, so we'll. We'll probably try to move forward with those and prefer later and spot any questions.
Thank you, sir. Back to Brad.
Good morning, everybody.
Morning.
Um, quick update on things. As far as accreditation double two, IPSEC breaks from gate, which is getting on going from the last meeting and now. That's inspector one and two combined into certification, so obviously. That's down by one. Uh, the pro board rate twenty-six, which is down two. I was talking with Bob Rand, who is the accreditation manager for pro board and explaining our, our plans examiner situation. He said he was going to remove it since we're not testing, we're not training, we're not teaching to anything. All it, all it will take is simply just adding a back up when we get to that point. And no concerns, no issues with it or whatsoever. It's a matter of kind of administering a house square on the pro side. So we're at twenty-six levels. The only two programs that are currently not fully accredited is the plans examiner, which is still as accredited as we just said currently. And airport fire. Um, since the last meeting, um, we have updated eleven forty, which is the bottom line one and two, we're good there. Uh, ten thirty-three investigator is good now. Um, and the inspector that we spoke on and the fire life safety educator one and two, uh, we are all to the current condition. Those were the most significant. The. I have a palm I remember here is ours being more, I think. Preparations. Um, with that being said, we're, we're working, moving forward with intent of giving the next big ticket. Um, and getting that into the rules that are in that sense and was. Moving forward as we need to. Um, there's a few items that I'll make till. The next section where I come up, I'd like to address, we can talk about a lot of things. But this is just kind of a general, maybe well, accreditation situation. Got any questions?
Okay, good.
Uh, I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
Currently, how many tests do we have suspended right now?
As far as mine, there's none suspended.
Okay.
The, the only two that would have suspended was the investigator and the bottom. And those were addressed and fixed. Instructor, I'm sorry, instructor and wild. Those have been addressed and corrected with, uh, updating the accrediting models and.
What about ARF and airport?
ARF is not suspended. There's not a means to do the practical skills.
Okay.
So if, if we're going to be accredited to it, there's not a place right now. That I'm aware of in the state of Tennessee that is able to meet a hundred percent of the JPRs, which doesn't allow us to test too bad.
I was in a emergency, emergency operations meeting with Millington Airport on Friday and. Chief Naferi and Director Gilbo said that in about three weeks, they're going to have that last. Piece of the puzzle that they're missing in order to be able to do that.
And it was just the one JPR, some of there. There's a well, and one of that oddity, it may appear that if that fits and give it up and run it, then. It'd be good to go. But, but as far as it being suspended, it's not suspended.
Okay.
It's just we're incapable of.
Gotcha. Thank you for the clarification.
Any other questions?
Thanks, sir. TFAK, Jeff or Jason?
Morning, sir.
So I assume. This part is, is what we talked about.
Yeah, they're down there, I D.
Are we going to tackle that now?
Yeah, I guess we pull up here, D and E. I think hers, I think hers are E's.
Come on, Bill. But you're on the hot seat, like, yes, no.
Yes, no, no, that's it, no.
We have a third class graduate back in October who was successful with all of one of those leading here with, uh, A and O and fire power one. So, uh, we're very happy about that. Um, we also. Last week, been training on our new burn rule. So, uh.
So, uh, finally got that correction laid on the underground and, uh, the building is up and running now, although not completely turned over to us yet. We have a bunch of stuff to go through, uh, on getting the building turned over, but, uh, but it is working now. So that's good news. Uh, we also have, we're planning to have our aerial delivered. Uh, we're doing midpoint inspection in the second week in December, right past, looks like the end of January. So, uh, we'll be happy to get that here. And then, uh, another thing that will be going through in the next few months, something somewhat disruptive is we're doing a, uh, a complete alarm repair project on campus. So we're planning the project. So every building is getting new fire lines.
Oh.
So, uh, that's something somewhat disruptive. We're working with contractors. And minimize that as much as possible. Putting them in buildings where we don't have classes at this certain point, but, uh, this layer one, now that the gun can disrupt, it's just how that work goes along. So those projects, uh, that I just talked about, I'm going to go on to four pretty hours. Since that, in our academy or the plants, it's for years or so, so major things we have going on. So do we want to go ahead and address these? Of course, we want to do that.
Yeah, I do. They're up. Let's skip to D. You have full programs you're submitting?
Yes, sir. We got to have that technology, which is awareness, making decisions. People are modern, they smoke screen and navigating uh, this quick water, per water, quick water awareness. And, uh, those are all four hour programs, just like we can hear from your four in-service. I mean, it's, we'll roll those out, start doing the paperwork. And then, uh, the fourth one I also submitted and which is one, uh, supervisor, or if you're with me, and that's the lithium ion battery awareness precaution. That's also four hour program under the home side of the house. So I'd be happy to address any concerns or questions you have with those.
entertain a motion to approve?
Uh, motion to approve.
I'll second it. Solomon say.
Solomon second. In discussion on these submissions by TFAKA.
I sat through the, uh, chief training officer symposium, and they're all very good classes. And I highly recommend anyone who doesn't come to it, they need to come. Uh, it's, it's well worth it to be able to get a idea of what these classes are. So especially when they come in front of the board here, uh, we actually know a lot about it. So, just my two cents.
All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, same sign. The ayes have it.
Thank you, Director Spock.
Thanks, sir.
And I, I think we have two more from TFAKA. Item E, we already forced her up here.
Yes. The new standard in authority, we will have to figure our inspection program. Five submitted a new seventy-hour, two-week fire inspector program to meet that standard. We are also gonna add a new NPA standard for first offender inspection. It'll be a one-week as well, no given avenue for a company level inspection. Do they have questions?
I do. Uh, where are we at on the actual fire inspector test? Because there, there was a discrepancy here with what was being taught and what was being tested. Right, but we were testing like third edition where we're teaching fifth edition, basically.
This is what all the, the right appropriate new test.
My own question is the first responder, are we gonna, currently not accredited? We want to be accredited to that. And it's a chapter in that standard. If we want to be able to issue if that seals, then we would need to, to be an accredited program. And then I would go through all the steps to add that level. And however long it takes going through the legal process before we would be able to actually deal with, but.
Well, luckily, one of the chapters that we have open right now, kinda quasi, is certification. So it's something that, since we have to come back and talk about it, it's something we can look at adding since it is a certification. Um, yeah, are we just gonna open every chapter for y'all? So you just kinda have free rein? Whatever it takes. No, no. We, we try to minimize, minimize it as much as possible, but unfortunately, things just keep popping up left and right. So, um, but yeah, knowing that it is a certification, I don't see
Yes.
why not add it.
Yes, absolutely.
So.
That's, that's a huge decision.
We need a motion to do that.
Well, we need them. I make a motion that we accept the two, uh, inspector courses.
I second. Commissioner Henry.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of these two classes? Can I say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Like some? The ayes have it. That's just the class right now. That's not the certification.
Yes, sir.
For that first responder.
Yep.
All right. Uh, Mary Beth, do you want to just give your report as we hear these items or do you have additional items? All right. Assistant Commissioner Beth.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and that it off. Mr. Chairman. Um, first, before I give my report, uh, you, I've been now attending these meetings, um, for the last year or so. And I want y'all to know, I've, I've seen a lot of boards and commissions meet over the, over the years. And it's a thankless job, and I appreciate y'all. I know y'all don't, y'all are getting paid a lot to do this. I say that facetiously for anybody who may be, uh, listening on things, uh, it's unpaid. But I appreciate the work that y'all do, um, and the, um, the obvious passion that you have for the, uh, fire service in the state. Uh, I want to make one comment about the residential burn building. We hope, right now, we are looking at maybe a mid-December ribbon cutting on it. And we will make sure that, that every commission member is informed of that. I know it's a long drive for some of you, but we would love for you to be here when we do that ribbon cutting. So that, Laura, if you'll be sure that, uh, that they are given notice when that's happening. But we're looking at a mid-December date right now. Also wanna, I know, uh, um, Laura or Director Costin's already been, uh, complimented by, by the commission already. But we, uh, we recognize the, um, the job that she is doing, filling in. And, uh, even got a letter, uh, earlier this week from the Tennessee Fireman, Representative of the Tennessee Fireman Association, praising Director Costin and the, the work she does. So Director, we appreciate that. We know you're working hard. Appreciate it. Um, Deputy Commissioner Kane wishes he could be here today. As, as many of you know, I think he's, if he's not sent, uh, come to your area of the state and seen you personally, he's on his way. I can tell you that. He's been just about everywhere in this state, uh, and has, uh, has dived all in to the fire service. Some of you may know that he actually joined the Marlowe Volunteer Fire Department in Clinton, in Anderson County. I called him Monday night and he was driving to his first training session. And he was a little nervous, but he was driving to his first training session as a volunteer firefighter. And, uh, uh, I just, um, I, I can't say enough for, for him and the job that he's doing. Uh, and, uh, getting, well, just getting to know the fire service in safe Tennessee. And again, he wishes he could be here, but he had other, another commitment he had to be at today. Um, some of this information I'm gonna go over in the report. Y'all have already heard. I'm just gonna touch it again. Uh, y'all know I'm serving as interim program director until replacement is found and give an update on that. Uh, Chairman Windrow, uh, and, um, myself and Deputy Commissioner Kane, we spent a couple of weeks going over of the, the job qualifications and what would be included in the posting when we posted this, uh, this notice online for, for the director's position. It has been posted for a little over a week now. I think we have about a dozen candidates so far. We've got some really great candidates. It, it will be posted through mid, uh, it's either Monday or Wednesday next week. I'm not sure what, what day it, uh, is the last day to post them. But it's either Monday or Wednesday next week. It'll be posted and, uh, we'll probably get a few more candidates. But we hope hmm, maybe by the first year to have a new director in place. I know it takes a little while to go through the hiring process. And then as I was talking to Chairman Windrow before we started the meeting, even, even after we find somebody, you know, we have to be cognizant that they're gonna be leaving a position and working with that former employer. And so exactly when they can start, we don't know. We hope maybe by the first year to have a new director in place. And, uh, and, uh, it is something that we are, we are working very hard on. Just want you, commission members know that. Again, as I said, I'm the interim until the replacement's found, Director Costin will remain as the administrative director. And she's taking care of all the day-to-day, uh, duties. Uh, our office is currently completely fully staffed, short of hiring the new director. The grand divisions for are changing for coordinators, but not for proctors. We're moving eight counties from middle Tennessee coordinator to the West Tennessee coordinator and three counties from middle Tennessee coordinator to the East Tennessee coordinator. Just trying to divide the, um, the work burden up a little bit more equitably, equitably between the three, uh, the three coordinators. Uh, a Catus testing is on course. Uh, Laura and Greg are working on getting the test into the Catus. They will then begin working with departments across the state that have an interest in the test, in test host sites. Uh, we, of course, we've already discussed this in, in the, um, in the earlier meeting, but the previous, the rule changes coming up, the previous director identified a few additional necessary rule changes where opening new chapter and subsections became necessary. Those proposed additional changes have been provided to the commission for review. And of course, there will be a rulemaking hearing, public comment period, but we are not able to open these additional sections without the permission of the commission. Uh, policy and procedure changes, legal will discuss as we already have, but, uh, we'll continue to discuss with commission the document. Commission's been calling a policy and procedure document. Uh, this document's never been reported to the legislature. This is where my pass comes back and bites me. I actually passed the law that requires boards and commissions to report their policies each year to the legislature. And, uh, and it more clearly defined what a rule, policy and, and a standard operating procedure are. So that's what, that's what we're trying to get all, all of your documents in line with that statute. And it's gonna require a little bit of work, and we, we are working on it. Um, the office believes that much of the policy and procedure document can be converted into either an SOP to make it both enforceable or into either rule or an SOP to make it enforceable and to protect the commission if there were a policy and procedures question during audit. Again, we've gotta comply with state law. So that's my, uh, report as both a, um, assistant commissioner and, um, the, um, director.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Uh, don't think we have any old business. Uh, we'll move to new business. Item A, West Tennessee audit approvals. We're twenty West Tennesseers.
So I'll make a motion to accept all of the West Tennessee audits minus Martin. Martin. As a batch.
Second by Commissioner Green. Any, so no findings, all?
All.
And how many departments did y'all do in West Tennessee?
Nine.
Nine.
Yeah, nine.
Second.
Any other discussion? Not? All those in favor of accepting these audits, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Then we have Martin.
I make a motion to accept Martin. I did that by the teams because it was, uh, kinda hard to do a four-hour drive for a fifteen-minute audit. So, uh, we concluded that through, uh, teams meeting and it was a clean audit.
I'll second, uh, seconded by Commissioner Solomon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And one abstention?
One abstain.
Corey Green abstains. All right, uh, middle Tennessee audits. We completed nine, which now I lost the list. In the last, like I said, the last week, we, we got busy. Thanks to, uh, Mission Employee Ratley for running all over middle Tennessee to get those done. I mean, they were spread out. Sorry, my list went away. Uh, actually Commissioner Ham did Decker, Telahoma, Shelbyville. We'll take those three first.
All clean audits, uh, everything was good. Make a motion to approve those.
Make a motion? Actually, second.
The second.
Sorry.
All those in favor of Decker, Telahoma, Shelbyville, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, like some? The ayes have it. Uh, then myself and Commissioner Employee there, Mr. Radley, we did Aston City and Clarksville. Uh, those were clean audits. Uh, Clarksville is like a lot of departments now, especially the bigger ones, using vector solutions. Uh, actually is, can be fairly quick. Uh, so I, uh, I'm make a motion that we approve Aston City and Clarksville.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Solomon. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, one abstention.
Yep.
Uh, Commissioner Cobb abstains. It is his department. And he was audited. This worked that way. I promise. It's random. All right, uh, then Commissioner Henry did Hendersonville with Ratley again.
No issues.
No issues.
Uh, make a motion to accept this.
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Green. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Have it. And then Commissioner Ham did Brentwood, Franklin and Nolan's will yesterday.
All clean audits, uh, again, just like Clarksville, um, Franklin uses vector solutions. So being a large department like that makes it real, feel nice, um, and cut your time down considerably. But, uh, they were all clean and make a motion to approve all three.
Second.
The motion is second. All those in favor, Brentwood, Franklin and Nolan's will say aye.
Aye.
One abstain.
One abstention. Uh, Commissioner Windrow abstains.
Me too.
Oh, and Commissioner Scott, I mean, your Henry, wow, I did it right then. They're both right here.
I have hair now.
We have association with those departments, so. Mr. Henry, Commissioner Windrow abstain. All right, then we move to Greg's giving his report. I don't think he wants to give another, another. All right, he wants more time.
Oh, he's ready.
He's ready. All right, go ahead.
Um, let me in.
Right.
Um, the big data, the evaluation training, five points, five to six more. Have a few smaller things that we can talk about first to kind of get down to the box, or would you like to kind of run into the fight?
Go for the big base. Go for it.
Okay, so the evaluator training. Essentially, what this does is if, if you remember the, the last meeting where I brought forward a lot of the concerns I have from an accreditation standpoint with the way that we are showing practical skills across the state in the field with no kind of random reason or oversight of that. And from an accreditation standpoint, that is a big number of if that can grow work proud upon that, and it would be not good if they were here listening to this conversation right now or going to the, at the office or how we do it. Um, so that meeting, I, I made the, the request to put together this training to essentially approve evaluators in the field based off of the bar or the standard that is set by the commission that they have. And that's kind of what's captured within that power plant. Um, I can go through it all, kind of slide by slide. Or if you had the ability to review it and have questions, I would say we can, that might be a quicker route to go as far as discussing whatever concerns you have.
Uh, if we're gonna go ahead and review this document, do you have that available to where you can screen share for those, uh, customers online?
I guess, and I'll, that's a good idea, but beginning with the end in mind, how, how. Frequently and what's the availability to get this out there? Cause it's probably pretty easy for. Jason, take his staff and, you know, spend two hours and do it and okay, TFAK is done. Now how does? And how do we enforce it? Brentwood, Franklin, East Tennessee?
We perform in Tennessee.
Okay.
Um, initially because one, we need to get the, the masses approved. We've got to get the thumbs up because we need to start doing this sooner than later to begin. My, my, in talking with the previous director was to just do a pilot class here for the, the TFAK staff and, and those folks that were close to this proximity. And let them kind of ask questions and figure out what that looks like. You can make whatever. We fixed off the questions received to be able to address all of that information. Uh, and then essentially just hit the pit around the stake, however often as we need to, to make it, to get it done. Essentially that's the end goal is to get whoever needs it as soon as possible. And I, and I can't stress it enough. I'm going to keep saying this, but to get within where we need to be, we have a site to visit with this tech connection. And if, if it were June right now, we are seriously staring down the barrel of not being accredited based off of just one thing because there's so much. Uncertainty as part of the practical skills across the state. So it would literally be. Probably number one, getting out there, setting these classes up during two or three days in certain areas for shifts that the departments, like, that's really getting it out there. Now. At some point, could we do it online?
We could.
Um, I would, I would limit the number of students still online because it is going to be something new. It's going to be something different. There's going to be a lot of questions and it just. I would allow a lot of people in the class who knows how on that page, or if you're limited a little bit, you're able to control the environment a little bit better. And, and get the information out there because essentially what this class will do is explain to all of our evaluators out on the field, what they have to do, not to, to keep us in compliance. And. If it's a hundred people, if it's a thousand people, wherever that number looks like, they all have to do what we need them to do and do it the right way to keep us where we need to be. Because if somebody in northeast Tennessee is going to roll, that impacts the people who are in, in West Tennessee. You've got a hundred accreditation in this whole state, not in the Florida. Getting the information out there as, as quickly and effectively as we can is the number one priority. Once we get the thumbs up from whatever.
Yeah. Because to get this started, we just said firefighter two, everybody can evaluate. As long as it was to firefighter two, which was the, probably the biggest pool. You know, uh, that was how we got this going. So again, big view down the road, not digging into the slides, but. So, uh, you're live barn instructors for whatever March to November, 20 part timers, a lot of them?
Well, the weakness side barn with bigger pool and crew, recruit, water and recruit.
Yeah. So I mean, there's a big pool and then again, how does, how will you know? I mean, is there going to be a, a column added in the C A T S that this person has completed evaluator? How will you be able to spot check accountability?
From my understanding, there is not an easy path to those.
In goods.
So part of this is going to go to the, the executive. One, it can be a blanket request and more like it happens. We need to know when and where they're doing testing, when and where they're doing our certifications, because we got to be able to do audits on their training. So the departments will have to request each one of their classes that they want to do. And in that request would be dates, times, locations. Who's going to be teaching it and who's going to be evaluating? And then when the course request comes into the office. We would check and confirm that the person that has done this particular class and meets the box of whatever the requirements are that you decide to put in place for the different levels. When it comes to testing, ropes technician, a firefighter two can attest to that. They're, they're not an S M E, they're not an expert on any of that. And I can attest to that because I'm not a ropes guy and I wouldn't be the person we wanted out there. We'd all be going to jail for that, we'd be at that point. But we have to legitimately set what this, what the expectation is for every single one of our certifications. And who is going to be able to evaluate them and not evaluate them. And in that part of it, there's again, a foundational just. Discussion and conversation on what it could look like. There was an example of, uh, there was a chart out there for each one of our certifications. Have them either instructor one, instructor two, and how many years to be certified to those levels, uh, to be able to be an evaluator because. If I pass my ropes technician today, you surely probably doesn't want me testing for ropes technician tomorrow. To the point where we were talking earlier about time to interview the instructor kind of, so, um. That's there. And again, it's, it's just an example. Uh, if, if it works, that's great. If we can achieve that and change that. But what we can't have is 900 individual departments determining what makes a subject pattern. As the mission, we want to be A H J when it comes to the state of Tennessee certification programs, we have to finish. But that's then what that one looks like to be determined as an S M E. Most states out there, be all of the certification, be out of the certification to be able to test out the certification, you guys. Who's any kind of, well, I have this class, I have that class, or my chief doing last year, my chief doesn't like me, but I've been doing it for so many years. You come on out, you got to have, this is what it is, if you want to work towards this certification. I understand what that means and what that changed. It's going to look like. It's, it's not going to be something that's easy. It's not going to be something that's. Both is something that we desire to be accredited. We need to do something.
Yeah, man. You'll definitely shrink the pool real quick.
And that's not the intent.
No, but it's.
That shouldn't be the, the reality of it. But one of the examples, or one of the, the kind of recommendations for the initial onset is. I think in there, I put one, one, uh, 2027. Up until that point, as long as you have an official course, we did, you can check the box as an evaluator. And that just goes essentially a little over a year to determine that certification if they've got the pass. So it's not a matter of, hey, you know, if today you're going to have the certification to do this, there's, there's some wiggle room. The nice thing about accreditation is when they show up and do our business, they bring our policies, you know, we do. You know, policy says that we're giving a window before they have, they have a certification, then we're not in violation of them. You're essentially. Beating what we're saying, we're doing, and we're paid to do that. But in the, in the vagueness of what does a course look like? Last second or 40 hours, last second or 10 hours course, you know, there's a lot of discrepancies in, in, in the. Proximity of what that course looks like. And so that's why I would recommend be falling again for the certification.
So I have a couple of questions. This is something that we've been discussing. This is something that we need to have in place by July?
As, as soon as possible.
Okay. Prior to July?
Is the percut of June is outside.
All right. Um. First question is Mayor Beth, would this fall as a policy or would it fall as a rule?
So the evaluator, uh, Fire Officer is bringing it written out in the rules already. I think they can. They're like, I think they have the certified to be a standard to be an evaluator. Uh, changing it to require that you pass the evaluator course. I don't think it would be a significant. That we have opened after, uh, we've proposed the commission to discuss the opening after this. Um, for this reason, but I don't think that this is going to delay the rules.
Oh, no, it's, it's, since we've opened up so much, it's, it's going to be what it is.
I don't, I'm thinking.
All right. So follow-up question is historically, a department can go ahead and put in a blanket. And you brought this up and this is why I'm asking you, a department can go ahead and do a blanket course approval. Where I want to teach fire officer one in, in my department or in my area. I go ahead and do the web form on a C A T S, I get the blanket, I'm approved to teach this class now. Is that going away? Is that what you're saying?
Essentially that would be true. Because one, standards change. And when the standard changes, if there's a blanket approval for a course. From the 2014 edition of Fire Officer, and they've been approved to run that, there's essentially nothing requiring them to move forward. But yeah, we're going to issue them a certification off of a 2024 because of.
Yeah.
So that's, that's the main reason. One. Two, if, if I just have a blanket approval and I'm able to run certification class according to requirement of the company, then that removes our ability to show up and do an audit on the practice skills. Both currently the way Tennessee is approved, I've not been able to find anything different. Every single one of our practical skills needs to be being evaluated test from some of them. Whether that's raising a ladder or sitting at a table writing a budget, there has to be a proctor or evaluator, whatever the terminology. Have to be in that room watching those people. Everything that the government are mailing out currently is violation of policy.
Because that's where we discussed previous, where the difference between a practical and a project.
Yes. Now, we can go and request, because of the change of methodology, the way that we're approved is, is why I'm just explaining about. If I waiter in the room or at the location in real time, watching and grading that practice skill being done. We can go back to those, to second pro board and request a change of methodology that says we want to do projects. We want to do a workover. That's possible, but we're currently not there. And I, pro board would be a little bit more complicated because pro board provides you with approved methodologies. And if we fall in line with their approved methodology, which is 99%. People in the room watching you to grade me, they're like, all right, for us to be approved to do a workover project, we have to get into the weeds and show how we're doing that. And how we are guaranteed, that's why I sent Commissioner Scott to the skill that it is, that you doing it and, uh. And Mayor helped me with this kind of thing. And pro board is weary on that specific aspect of things. So it, it's not impossible. But we would have to petition and invoke, uh, that's part of the, the, the credit bodies and get the approval for us to be able to do what was coming to be joking.
Well, I, his, back in the day, when I did my officer one practical, it was actually in a testing event. And then when I did my officer two, that's when we actually went to the packets. Um. Is it feasible to go back to doing the testing event for this right now until we get this straight up or, or fixed or?
Not based off of what we are approved for. Because I can go to them and say, if you'd like to request this, I have to have that, I have that structure of what that looks like. To be able to, just can ask them, hey, we want to go to projects in Tennessee and them to give us a.
No, no. What I'm asking is for the time being, to make sure we're in compliance. Can we go back to the, the practical actually being done in a testing event?
Oh, yes, sir. Absolutely. Because at that point, that's the bottom of our policy. It's part of our, our, everything's done in a, a, a testing event. So if, if, and I'll use the three coordinators for an example, they're here. If, if, if we bless them to, to sign off on any one of our certifications. Then anything that they're doing as far as testing is concerned is valid and legit. And it, because they're not teaching the courses well. Then we, we stay above board when it comes to the, the policy. Now. I'll use myself as an example instead of the one of these three on the spot. I am not certified to the ropes level like we spoke about. I am not the guy, but if you say Greg, you're the accreditation manager, you should be able to draw this. That's fantastic. But I'm still not the guy we want breaking a ropes technician or awareness level for that matter, skill. That's where that chart as far as showing the different skills, the different promoters. And those people certified to be able to. Do the testing of the evaluation.
So a contractor, and we'll get to this question. So a contractor who's not certified as fire officer two can't, can't test a practical for fire officer two.
Essentially, if you, whatever you said that part of the subject factor is for that. If you, whether they're certified or not, essentially you can make that be deemed as subject evaluation expert. That's, that's what, that's the term of credit, the, the credit bodies use. It would create the practice good without being subject to that.
Laura, with the question?
David, go ahead.
Is the sound muted?
David.
Not bad. Sorry about that. So my understanding listening is pretty much every in-house type practical would not work anymore, correct?
You said every in-house practical might not work now. In my air, it may not.
Okay.
What?
So one question I have that comes from the whole state. How is it whether you like Alabama Fire College or other states or not, if you go take a class out of state. All of your practicals are done in-house during the class and on Friday you take an exam without all of the extra hoops to jump through. And they're going to turn right around and do reciprocity. And yet it's still IFSEC pro board approved. Is what this is?
David, repeat.
Okay. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. Other than the obvious, which I don't have to state, the hardship it's going to put on departments trying to get certifications done. How is it that whether you like people going out of state or not, if I go to Alabama Fire College and take officer three. On Friday, I take the exam and all practicals are done. It's IFSEC pro board approved. Period. And that's a lot of states, not just Alabama. It seems like Tennessee always has different rules on practicals and different events.
Tennessee would like to go to a program where you take a week one class of fire officer one and you do all the practical skills in that week and you do the rigid family that week. And it's a done deal, that's acceptable. But the way Tennessee is set up, the way we're set up. I would, that was, that was in place well before I got here. I'm, I'm trying to work with it and I'm fine with the way the state is, is established right now. About reviewing the entire thing. We can make everybody come to TFAK and do their classes here. And then that's very easy because we, we train. Very good gesture. Staff would be evaluators and instructors and then everything gets done here. That's, that's the absolute easiest way.
That would definitely not work for volunteer department.
No.
It's not the state.
No. All every department will do is drop Tennessee commission certifications.
It would cause departments to drop the certification program, period.
And I'm not advocating for that. That's not what I'm doing here. I haven't advocated for trying to come up with the simplest way and the, the least impact. That's an option. The other option is for me to make these three guys trainers with every full top piece of equipment for all of our certifications and then try to run the state setting up testing events like a stated.
And I think all these are they asking for is if you're grading a fire officer for practical, it shouldn't be a fire, you shouldn't get firefighter two graded for practical. That, that's probably where we're getting in trouble.
That's 100% all of that. That we got for.
Not trying to kill the system. We're just trying, again, the, the mission of the commission is to raise the level of pressure on some, well. The fire should start with all evaluators in the field. It should be consistent across the state. And it's not. For Jeff, most of his staff probably can pull it off. Memphis fire, Nashville fire, there's enough S M Es in those big departments. We're getting in trouble with Jamestown. Uh, if you got somebody trying to do fire officer four in Fenchers County, that, that may create a, a little more burden. But that doesn't mean it's the right thing to do. I think that's where you're at. It's, it's like safety standards. Yeah, they're, they're annoying, but they're the right thing to do.
When it comes to a certification, you're going to like. My job is to make sure we stay within that line. Whatever you all decide to do with that, that thing is 100% true decision now. I can throw ideas out there, we can, we can brainstorm and spit all over the things. At the end of the day, I want to hear is the right and left side of the mist that we have to operate in if we're staying with that. Apparently, we're on a football field trying to play water. I mean, that, that's, that's where we're at with some of the, the practices that we're doing as far as our certifications go. If, if, and if we don't want a present certification. And if we don't want a present certification, that's one hundred percent fine too. We can come up with the state of Tennessee certifications and do whatever we decide to do at that point. Then there's no rules that you put in place. But if we're going to argue to keep the SAG Pro Board on our certifications in the state of Tennessee, based off of what we're doing currently, we've got to change things and it's going to be uncomfortable. And I understand it. And that's why I'm trying to come up with the least amount of impact for the fire service as well.
And, and it's not page sixteen of your chart for an instructor one and two or Officer One to people. Somebody has to be certified and have five years. There's not many departments that couldn't. Uh, can't be the teacher. But you need this person at the practical exam. Whoever that is.
Where did those years come from?
He probably just pulled them out of there.
It could be two years, it could be ten years. There, there was no wrong or reason.
I didn't know if that was an IFSEC or Pro Board.
Those are.
Like suggestion.
Those are definitely.
He had to change.
From a standpoint of, the, the last thing I listed for additional year was to really show that, do you want the people training your, your officers to only have been certified for four years or a little bit more experienced than they're built for their actual work? Again, you can say they got a certification on Friday, they're, they're able to test on Monday. That's a hundred percent your decision.
No, I mean, I agree with your analogy of I don't want a rope tech to be a rope tech Friday, and then Monday he can go check off the rope tech. He hasn't had his hands on the ropes long.
You do have a couple of comments here. Um, Randy has said, you're about to make getting some of the search harder, especially for the smaller departments, is what, if what he is trying to do, is what he is trying to do going to affect HMA, HMO, Firefighter One, Firefighter Two practicals, as well as PDO, AADO, and Fire Fire Inspector One? Isn't the purpose of having Fire Instructor One as well as Two being able to teach and conduct skills and practicals? Doesn't a Fire Officer Four practical rated by, by the commission? This is questions.
I mean, they don't have the advantage, I don't think they can see these slides right.
No.
I mean, it's right now, it reads Firefighter Two can be a practical evaluator, doesn't limit them. But, I mean, it's, he's, his chart is only showing three years for those listening online. So, most Firefighter Twos take two to three years to get there. Well, maybe a little faster now with TFAKA and some of the bigger academies. But it's not, I don't, I don't think it's going to be an undue burden because when we have a practical, I have to call around and maybe even Director Elliott and Jason have to call and get Brentwood to send somebody, Murphy's Borough to send somebody. I mean, we don't usually can pull off a practical on our own anyways. We, we rely on our sister departments to send people that we feel are, and most departments only send people they feel are qualified, normally.
Well, another problem is usually that the last minute for trying to get people, especially in smaller departments. So to turn in a list a month in advance of who this is going to be my evaluator, that's going to be impossible.
And then again, any kind of requirement from anybody, that was just.
So, let, let's do this, the, for those people that are watching at home. Uh, let's start with the course requirements page on that PowerPoint so they can see. Because a lot of the things that we're discussing are actually in this PowerPoint. And so if we tackle this page by page, it could answer some questions. It's going to be. Well, we won't go through all thirty-one. But just the chunks of it, because like what we're talking about right now, course requirements. Must be, uh, approved prior to being held, so that takes away that blanket that we talked about, right? You're asking for it to be done thirty days in advance, so that way.
I'm not there, just say, uh, they can't just stand around and say, hey, Monday, Monday. If you change that to twenty-four hours, you can change it down. Just small shows. Whatever, whatever you deem that to be appropriate. Those things should put up.
Right there.
Where is that, that, the online uh, platform?
Twelve. Laura. Yes.
If, 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 does that cause completion? Doesn't it affect? If it's a, it's.
Twelve.
And then it's true.
Hey, we cannot hear anything being said.
Because it's not being graded in a way that IFSEC will be graded. If it's just a training class that allows them to sign up for a testing event, then great. If it's a training class that at your department, I said, do it online. You do the practice skill quickly, and that's fine. But any of them that are setting off practical skills that we are currently accepting and have been done appropriately in a strictly, we, we can't validate that, that it's being done the way we're being done from accreditation.
Okay.
Right.
Well, so right now, it's two weeks. When you apply the most practical. Today.
Fourth day. Cut off.
Two, two weeks.
It's the cutoff.
Today. You don't necessarily know who the evaluators are yet.
Right.
I mean, at least you're using the same evaluators over and over, you know. Or at least you have the pool.
All right. So covering course requirements, page twelve.
Yep. So the, the, the days, the timeframe is, is strictly whatever you obviously decide to be appropriate. Twenty-four hours, thirty days, one week. There's no set requirement from an, an accreditation standpoint. It's just that they have to be reported to us, period. So we are aware of them, that they're taking place.
Right.
Uh, based on the current issue, uh, that has came up, certification testing is only allowed to be taking place in the state of Tennessee. If we're going to go to another state or onto a military installation, there are additional steps that have to be done. States are very difficult. It's not, it's not a, hey, we're just going to roll up into Kentucky and start doing Firefighter One training. We can't do that. If it's a, if it's a certification that another state doesn't offer, then as long as we go through the process of approval, we can go do that. The DOD was the one exception to the rule because of the nature that there are military installations all over the world. Uh, the, the delegation side of things from an accreditation standpoint. Like I mentioned, I can't, we can't go to Kentucky and offer certifications that they offer because they offer. DOD, the exception's been made that even if the DOD is accredited to it, as long as the, the agreement and, and the approval process is taking place, we can go onto a military installation and do those. And so that's just kind of outlining what that, that requirement is. And so mainly so if we get requests, everybody understands kind of what that looks like.
We could skip page thirteen.
And then, just so I'm tracking the course, uh, request requirements, include the next slide, correct?
Correct, okay. We could skip that, because that's just, that's what we already fill out anyways when we do the blanket, so it's.
The only thing that I'm at today is, is, uh, the props.
So currently, we are, we do not check to make sure that when they submit a course approval, that they have the props to be able to do. Above grade, below grade, and at grade fires. Or cut cars, or zentrus, or do any of those things we just assume that is being done without any kind of confirmation.
Just talk.
Okay. And I can talk loud, but they said that was the one, I can hear myself, and that's what's throwing me off.
Okay, didn't take that. They were saying they couldn't hear you. Somebody's turned the mic on. Can we turn that down?
And you can hear yourself in that. Is that mic on? In front of you. The. At the base, it's, you know, it's a big change to be resistance. But if, and, and Commissioner Hensher, if we're going to be accredited, we have to do this. So the choice is, are we going to be accredited or not? Well, if the answer is yes, then we have to. It's going to make it a little harder.
Yeah, so.
Yeah.
This is an option. Again, like I said, we could, we could make these guys drive all over the state, we could make everybody come here. We're within this lane, we can do whatever we want to do. It's got to be within this lane.
Okay. But yes, to answer your question, sir, we've got to do something, something's got to give. Right, and like I said, I understand it's changed, I understand it's uncomfortable, and I understand it's going to have an impact. Five years from now, this will be a moot point because it'll be the, the norm.
I mean, do we look at the baseline, uh, we've allowed, if, if, if I sign six people up in Owens, well, we do a fracture. Maybe they need to be bigger. You know, to have a practical to make it where you can get the evaluators you need, it has to be multiple agents. I, I don't know, I'm just. We, we do, we, we've gone all over the state and done six since we started this almost twenty years ago. Is it time to rethink that? I don't know, what's the rookie classes or what, twenty-two, you just do Firefighter One and Two that day, usually?
Well, I wanted to be quiet, but I'm not sure, I wanted to make sure what I should ask. Are you saying, we're not even discussing that today? So just because Greg and I are across the hall from each other, uh, are we, is this discussion also the point that, in other words, if TFAKA gives instructors credential to be uh, evaluators, that also we're going to, is this discussion also the possibility that we're going to do away with a practical day? Where we'll be able to say on the next day, we're doing, we're pulling six practical from the testing, or we also discussing the new format could be that our evaluators do a hundred percent of the skills?
Yes.
So I, TFAKA is not sure even how we're going to pull that off.
So what?
Keep in mind, and I'll hold it on my, Frank will know. Frank has got an M W that's great at teaching ladders. But then Frank will be told, okay, those were the second matter experts. You pick to teach ladders, but now you've got to schedule a day that none of those instructors are first. I'd recommend first. Uh, and be the evaluators. If, even for, for a medium-sized department, you're going to be in trouble. We're not sure how we're going to pull it off, I, I will tell you. And please don't think that I'm arguing with you that, that we're, I'm not saying we're doing compliant, but I'm saying TFAKA doesn't think we'll be able to keep you doing it in ten weeks. Because if, if all of our instructors that were engaged in teaching them in are told, you can't be the evaluators. And, and, you know, in other words, when we're doing ladders, we know for fact that we, that we use ladders. We did all the skill sheet, but then they get told, okay, that complement instructors taught them. But now, a, a new complement of instructors has to come in that are proevaluator and redo those same skill sheets, but this time in the testing environment. We're not going to be able to do that in ten weeks.
So to caveat that point real quick. That requirement, so if we have a, a, a format in place that does the audits, that's an IFSEC thing. If you teach ladders, as long as we have a program in place that allows an audit to be done, the same person that teaches it can grade the practical skills. Commissioner Henry shows up and gives the written exam. Obviously, written exams are done here, so that's a moot point, disregard that whole comment, I apologize. But that's, IFSEC will allow the same person. There's, there's a couple of items of criteria that have to be met, one of which is the, the fact that the classes are reported, that there is a, a audit, uh, audit process in place. So he could teach it, and then he could do the practical skills. We've got it set up in Tennessee where they're coming to a testing event to do the written exams anyways. The requirement to meet what Director Elliott's talking about is a Pro Board requirement.
So let me ask you this, because we've had this discussion. If we no longer do this as a practical, but as a project, and when they're doing their rookie class of ten weeks, and the project is that they're checking off each JPR as they go through this class, that would suffice.
We're still talking about firefighter, correct?
Yes.
So projects wouldn't be on the table for firefighter. Practical, like raise a ladder, I can't go back on the backside of the building, raise the ladder and then come back and tell you that I raised it.
No, no. The instructor.
That's projects, projects are, were done outside of the purview of the actual person grading the skill. Everything that they're doing in their rookie school, I'm going to watch you raise that ladder, I'm going to watch you drag that hose line, I'm going to watch you go up and down.
But that's where they can sign off on that practical.
They can absolutely do that. So part of this is, we don't have to wait until the end of a class and then set up a whole bunch of stuff. There's nothing that says too that if they have three instructors teaching and they, they leave a fourth one out that teaches ladders. It's not the whole encompassing of, of, of recruit class. If he teaches the ladders portion, I can come in and grade the ladders portion. I can teach the extrication part, or even the search and, you know, the, the.
So essentially, hit two instructors. But, yeah, instructor A is teaching the class, instructor B is watching, is evaluating the practical taking place.
As long as whatever he teaches, I'm not in the room in, in a role of an instructor. Right, if, if I'm in the back of the room and I allow the students to come talk to me on a break and answer questions and ask questions, I filled the role of an instructor. I'm a, I'm a teacher at that point. If he strictly teaches the ladders part, and then whenever we decide we're going to grade ladders, I show up and he goes away. All right, we're going to do ladders today. We are one hundred percent in the, in the green with that.
More sound.
When we talk about this, are we mixing two accreditations? Like, uh, Pro Board's got a set of rules, IFSEC's got a set of rules. And we're trying to meet both of those.
Because we're dual-accredited, we have to meet both of those. If we were to, and I'm not, if I'm not, and I'm not trying to advocate for this, I'm just, in the nature of the way this conversation's going. If we were to drop one of the two, then all we have to do is follow one set of rules.
So what, what are the benefits, to show my ignorance, but what is the biggest advantage of being dual-accredited? Because if you've got an IFSEC seal.
Uh, there's no.
You go to an IFSEC state, but I, I mean, I, how many, I guess my question is this is only.
So here's what I can tell you.
Leave the state, right? Is where the advantage of this comes.
Correct. So here's what I can tell you, there are nine states in the country that are strictly Pro Board accredited only, they do zero with IFSEC. I have emailed all nine of those states and said, if somebody from Tennessee showed up with an IFSEC seal, Firefighter Two certification at your front door, moving there, would you recognize their IFSEC stuff? And every single one of them said yes. Well, we have the emails, I can show you.
How many states are IFSEC?
I want to say there's ten IFSEC only.
So nineteen states, whether you've got.
That are single, single accredited, like Georgia, for example, Georgia is only Pro Board.
But would still recognize the IFSEC.
Yes.
See?
Yep.
Other than just giving them rest of the process.
Yes.
And see, we, we discussed dropping Pro Board. Which is fast.
And I know it's long enough, we have dropped it before. And it was forced back because of Fire Inspector.
Yes. Yeah. But I think we even looked at doing just Pro Board as a Fire Inspector, uh, certification. But then it came back in front of us saying that we were one of the largest Pro Board issuers in the country.
Now, I couldn't, I would ask where that information was obtained from?
Our, the previous coordinator brought us that.
But I'm, I'm just saying in general, wherever it came from, I would say, what was the source of that information? Tennessee is a student participation level two director for Pro Board. When you come and you earn a certification and it is, you, you pass your class, right? Commissioner Green, I hand you a Firefighter One certification and it's got your IFSEC seal on it. You, as the student, have to spend twenty dollars of your money to go get your Pro Board seal. We are not issuing Pro Board seals.
That's correct.
So when I say I'm questioning where that information came from about us being one of the biggest Pro Board accredited, I would ask, because that means every single student's spending their twenty dollars and mailing off their, their application.
Now, two directors ago, and it was after the previous accreditation manager, uh, left. Question. David, we're ready.
Go ahead, David.
I'm sorry.
There you are.
There you are. Go ahead, David.
So, I'm not trying to big, throw the elephant in the room, but is it in the rules now that if, as an instructor, you teach every single JPR, you do not have to have a practical on certain classes?
I'm going to repeat what I think you said, David, and please tell me if I'm wrong. I think what David said, equally, it's what's in rule now, that as an instructor, if you teach every single JPR, every skill, every single skill sheet, that currently counts as the practice.
Correct, such as PDO, we do every single skill, just like y'all do on ropes.
Correct, checking them off.
That is, that is correct.
That is correct.
From my understanding, the way that we're doing. That is, that is correct. From my understanding, the way that we're doing business currently, where the problem in that lies is there's 900 fire departments, which means there's potentially 900 different ways on which somebody's grading or not grading, or if you make me drive three miles and the other guy only makes me drive a quarter mile, there's no set, nothing to what that looks like. There's no standardization across the state.
And that's where the skill sheets come in.
The skill sheets are the standards.
Yeah. These are the skill sheets that we have as practicals. That's the standard.
It is.
So if, in the skill sheet, it says that they drive three miles, then that's what they're driving. But can, can you as?
We can what if this to death. You're going on people's integrity and department's integrity. Like, at this point, you cannot physically be at every single testing event. Cause that's why we have instructors, evaluators to be out there as a representative for us to say they are doing this accurately. I'm not sure what your course is wanting. Is it just to say this is what you, we expect of you?
There are instructors out there and they are in fact testing this. Can you guarantee that every single one of those instructors?
No, neither can you, and neither can anybody else in the country.
You make them go through this process that says you gotta be certified as an instructor one, you have to be certified as a driver operator for three years. You sit through this class and then now we know that there's, that's who's signing.
Well, it's fine. I know that nobody was supposed to be evaluating higher than a level they were already trained to. So that should already be out, out there.
Should.
But again, you're going on people's integrity. You cannot physically police a million firefighters.
Correct.
Or instructors.
If I send a class to the fire academy, I have trust in the integrity that the academy's gonna teach the class, just like you should if I teach it here at Jackson. Every system is gonna have somebody falsifying something. But yet we want a shotgun, the entire state is the way everyone is looking at it. And I understand we have to have a standard. But it has to be the same standard. Because one thing everybody looks at is the academy has their set of rules, and this is not a day at the academy, they need that. But then we're held to a different standard on how we set up test dates and do things and turn paperwork in. As long as the standards are there and they're specified for both, that's all we ask for.
Look, I can teach on behalf of the Academy's A C I instructor.
But there's a. Correct. There's a rule that states instructors cannot be the evaluators. But yet certain places are given those rights. Where is the rule that says if you teach all JPRs, you don't have to have a practical? That's what I'm asking, because I haven't seen it. I would like to look at it.
What was the question? I couldn't.
Where in the rules does it state if I do all the JPRs in this class? I mean, other than the fact we're doing the in-house, like the P D O, I give you a cover sheet showing all of it.
All I'm, all I'm trying to emphasize is the standard is there, the skills are there. It's just setting a baseline to who is allowed to evaluate it. If I, if, if there's no baseline that says you have to do certain things or meet a certain expectation, and we're taking it off of the trust and judgment of 900 different fire chiefs, there's gonna be 900 different variations on the, on what that looks like. And that's, that defeats the purpose of when accreditation says we have to set the standard of what an SME is. We're not doing that. We're leaving that up to the interpretation of all the different fire departments across the state. They do. The, if, the, the skill sheets come directly from what the standard says. It's almost verbatim based off of, it, it's not a matter of the skill that the student is performing. It's a matter of the person that is evaluating it.
Do we solve the problem by doing more spot checks? In what sense?
More spot checks. I don't care if the commission walks in any single day.
What I'm hearing is we're having multiple different, uh, maybe variations going on across the state. We need to constrict that down to one. So if we're doing more spot checks and we're holding more people accountable to what the standard is, then that standard will then be more unified across the state.
But even then, so let's say we say these three guys have to do all the spot checks. What he's looking for is gonna be different than what he's looking for than what, it's just the, the human nature of when we leave it up to interpretation of what somebody determines to be a subject matter expert.
Okay, so help me understand what, what are we? Out of phrases. What are you looking for then?
To establish a baseline for what it takes for somebody to evaluate one of our certifications.
Okay.
If right now, we are taking everybody at their word that they're doing it the right way, because nobody understands accreditation out there. When you talk to the, the layman firemen, they understand they, they, the classes that they take, they're listening to what the instructor teaches and they hope that the instructor's teaching the correct material. They do the practical skills that are put before them. If you were to ask them where all these skills came from, most firemen are gonna tell you the commission office, because that's what's on the piece of paper. When I sit in front of folks and have conversations and they, the fact that N F P A changes every five years, people don't know that. People aren't aware of that. And it's not a bad thing. It doesn't make somebody a bad fireman. It just means they don't understand the whole circle of what it takes to have an accredited certification program. And there's nothing wrong with that. That's, that's what I'm here to do, is to explain it and to make sure that we do what we need to do to keep it that way. When we allow anybody to make, and I say anybody, because essentially that's what we're gonna, we're gonna put our trust in. When we allow anybody to determine who can evaluate the skills, there's, there's no way that I can say that they definitively did it the right way. And to your point, Commissioner Boatright.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
We're still, you still have to put trust in people. But when you understand that people have had a, a level of understanding in a class that says this is what you have to do, now you can hold those people accountable. Because if I go to X Y Z fire department and say, guess what, Commissioner Cobb, you did this wrong. You're in trouble. Well, what did I do wrong? Who, nobody told me the right way to do this. There's, there's no understanding of what the expectation is of an evaluator, because we're not putting anything out there for them to understand what they're supposed to be doing and what they're not supposed to be doing.
Yeah, I mean, he's, I think we're overcomplicating it. We're talking about, because this is a startup process. It's a class, let's say 31 slides, two hours. We've got a catch-up period to teach all. So now, you know, if you want to be a 1403 instructor, you have to go get the 1403 cert. We've already upped the game a little bit online. So we're just upping the game a little bit about these evaluators that we don't have one week firefighter two as the evaluator. Right now, you can do that today. They can get their firefighter two today and be an evaluator. Tomorrow, they'll go in Dever, but this, wherever. What we could do in the future is in firefight, anybody that's doing the structure one class, you could add these 31 slides to that class into infinity and it'll take care of itself through time. But right now, we've got a startup period. We have no standard. And this, I'm not saying that, and he's not saying this is the best class ever put together, but it's a class. It's a standard for all of us to attend, just like we do for 1403. And we're gonna have a catch-up period, because right now, nobody's been to this class.
Is this, is this PowerPoint the class?
This would be the class.
Oh. Okay. I thought this was just a presentation.
No, this is, that's, this is.
You're going to do, let me just clarify, like the Fire Commission 101.
Yes.
Just do a two hour class for departments. Once those people have attended these classes, they're on this roster and they meet whatever qualifications that they can evaluate to, they're able to evaluate.
Yes.
And as part of that roster, is that gonna be put in there, just like a 1403?
We have so live for.
Because that's where, when the course approval comes in, and they list Greg as the instructor, and they list Michael Henry as the, the evaluator.
You're going to check.
We'll check the cadence and yep, you've got the class. You meet the prerequisites, you're, you're certified to that level or whatever that looks like. You get the thumbs up and the course approval, kind of a thing. If, if they submit that you're gonna teach it and I'm gonna be the evaluator, but I've never, I'm not even certified to that level or I've not had that class, then the course doesn't get approved, because you don't have somebody in the right place to be an evaluator.
TFAK?
So while we know the reason that I act hesitant, is this the right time? I don't think TFAK has concerned over the process we go through to get approved credential evaluators. So I think that should be a standalone discussion for y'all. But I do think then we have to have a separate conversation. What is that gonna look like for every single class? I mean, I want to go back to the example of right now, our 400 hour recruit program is one day that's scheduled for practicals and draw. And that's a very manageable thing. That's very manageable to say we're gonna do six practicals. And here's eight evaluators that were never part of the instructional pool. So I, I still think that's doable for us and probably for everybody else running their own recruiter programs. But, but if, if some way you also feel that the business model's gonna be that 100% of the practicals are done in-house by separate evaluators, that is an entirely different picture that I think we have to look at. And then, uh, uh, Jeff and Doris also said, you know, they did their P D O there. And I think we should look at that. What does that look like? If, if we're really gonna say their, their instructors taught, but now there's gotta be a separate day that in our, your people says we, we've been visualized every single skill sheet separately, uh, is, it's. Yes, I want to say, I think the, the commission needs to, to say we're gonna bless moving forward what the new credentialing process is for evaluators. But I do think we need to take it class by class. What is this gonna look like in the future? That, that's what I would say. I didn't really know, are we discussing both today or just the credentialing process? And then what it looks like in the field separate.
I feel like if we're going to do it the right way, we open up those lines of communication now. But whatever, we're, if there's a concern five years from now, if we don't mess with it now or we don't address it now, we're gonna have to deal with it in five years.
So I, I, actually, I, uh, and this is, this is a struggle for a while. I could not pretend to know if the house was like, to keep us from having to look over our shoulder for this problem, I would say. TFAK is very concerned how we're falling for trouble to say if, are there 100 skills? I, I don't know how many is in firefighter one. But for TFAK to say that we're prepared for the next group class to teach 100% of the trick from to teach 100% of the skills, but then to, to tell y'all, then we brought in when you hear now people to do evaluations over those skills. I don't think we, well, I think we're very confident we cannot do that in 10 weeks. Uh, our P D O team is very concerned. I mean, y'all know we rely heavily on our time. So they'll be saying that in two weeks, we talk P D O with three people. Uh, and then we, we probably foresee P D O having to go back to three weeks in order to bring in complimentary evaluators just to do skill sheets. Uh, so I, I, I do want to make sure that we put new thought into what does this look like in the future?
And I would, I know it's, it's a little easier in a recruit academy to do every day, if you're doing skills, think at all. But we've only ever done one practical. It was the very first one back in whatever 2000, and all 100 stations were set up. You could draw any card that day. That'll never work.
We, when you, when we go back to doing practical skills in front of somebody, as opposed to the mailing out email stuff, which is where you have to do 100%. If we go back to where we're doing it in front of each other, we can do randomization. Most states don't do 100% testing.
Right.
They, you know, if there's a hundred skills, some states are doing 10, some states are doing 15. It just, whatever that number looks like is how you want to do that. Just remember.
So just because I've taught nine recruit academies, we would do all the skills that we were given in our A C I program during the academy. Then at the end, we would set up testing with the commission. There would be a practical before the written, and there would usually be five or six random stations drawn. And we would make sure that that department had all the means to facilitate those stations. So, and we'd have different evaluators come in that were not part of the recruiting academy.
Okay.
So what's wrong with that?
Nothing. All I'm saying is we've got to set a baseline to what those evaluators.
Those evaluators can do.
I'm okay with the class, but the way it's coming across, the way it's being presented, it's not that way. That's why there's all this confusion out there. I don't think anybody would be opposed to attending a class for two hours and these are what is expected of you. And if you're a fire two, you must be a fire two for two years to be an evaluator. I don't think that any of the fire departments out there have a problem with that. But the way it was being explained to us, it was making it sound like it completely different than that.
Now, I apologize for not explaining it more clearly.
All right. So I have one, I have one last question. On a cadence, there was a practical evaluator class that you could take. I took it. They, we actually had, I think, four, four or five classes that were actually on a cadence at one time that you take.
I took that as well.
Yes. So can this not be on a cadence?
It can. The, the thing you lose with the cadence is all of the questions that get asked. There's, there's nobody there to answer those questions.
I mean, hands-on's always better.
And when, when we were, when we're dealing with what's riding on the evaluators doing the, the stuff the right way? If they've got questions and they don't get them asked, answered, and they go out and do stuff the wrong way, or God forbid, get somebody hurt or killed or whatever the case may be, then you're dealing with a whole different ballgame.
Okay. All right. There was only one other thing, and I think I addressed it in an email to both of you. On the Jones and Partland portion, driver operator is actually on it stuff.
Yes, sir. And I did make a note to, to change that. The, um, the only thing, and, and I'm not sure, I don't have the page numbers on the slides that I printed off, but it's the, the page that talks about live fire. Because there's not a certification in the state of Tennessee for live fire. We don't use the 1040 or the 1020 live fire instructor, live fire instructor in charge certifications. Something would need to be put in place as to what that would look like to be eligible, to be able to do the live fire part of, of checking off.
Well, they have to have 1403 period, which is a certification that we issue. Um, so.
And if that's it, that's fantastic. I just, I just needed your input.
Well.
As to what that looks like.
We were in the, under the impression, I should say, I was under the impression that, uh, we were already moved forward with, or we were in the process of moving forward with the instructor in charge having instructor two as well as 1403.
Okay.
Are we not there? Is everyone else under the same?
That was, he may have not have been told about that when he came into his job.
Yeah. But yes, that's my understanding. The instructor in charge had to be fire two, or I'm sorry, instructor two in 1403.
And then anyone else that was participating in that live fire had to be 1403.
Yes.
Is that in rule now or is that something you're working on?
David asked if it was in rule now or if it was something we were working on. I, I was under the impression we were working on it.
Working on it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Since that chat, since that chapter is open.
Thanks for telling me.
I know we're moving towards that.
Mr. Scott, I have a question.
David, did you have a question?
Yes, sir. So while we're on this topic, one subject I brought up at Gatlinburg during a meeting in regards to live fire is the wording practicals is throughout the commission documentation. Live fire training is just that. Live fire training as outlined in the minimum training laws. And I think that needs to be relooked at and how it's worded with all of these rules coming into play as well.
I think the update for the live fire or the live burn certificate or, uh, the document that the student receives has been changed or?
Has it been, if it's already been done online, yes. There was, and, and we discussed this at the last meeting. There was, there was no specification. It said at various levels. And the standard says that you have to do a fire above grade, at grade, and below grade, not various levels. And so we made that change. Part of that form also had old standards. We made that change, part of that form also had old standards and additions that were no longer used, so we updated those. And I, it's, it was going through the process of being updated on the website as well.
So are those new forms on the website? Okay.
This individual to our firefighter two or fire instructor one certified or individuals deemed by the commission to be subject matter experts in the area of firefighting and our air resident service evaluator. This is for live fire. Um, individuals shall submit their names and qualifications to the. They might have commissioned office with the road they're designing. So we have something about firefighter two. But I think the red line has to make that a little. Clearer as well.
The live fire form that individuals give. Says it was updated August of twenty-five online. Is that the correct one?
August of twenty-five?
Yeah, that's what it says on the bottom of all the docs. Does it revise in eight of twenty, twenty-five?
Does it say specifically on their above grade? At grade and below grade? Up in the, up in the, where they're signing off on the part, on the particular skills?
Uh, yeah.
It does.
At, above, below.
There we go.
It does.
So.
We just.
No, I think. I think where, where it may be in the process is it's getting that number that needs to be assigned at the bottom.
Okay.
For, for the state government's side of things, I think that's. But essentially, the information on that form is correct.
Well, it's got I N sixteen thirty-six and then revised in parentheses, eight twenty-five.
It's just an I N number, is it?
Yeah, there it is on, on both pages.
So David, to answer your question, the form that's online is correct.
Yeah, I'm referring to the rules that call it live fire practicals everywhere.
Yeah, I was talking about the practical part.
I made a note in my book for us to address it in our rules subcommittee meeting.
Mr. Chairman, uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, I was gonna make a motion for a ten-minute recess, not yet turned.
Okay.
Ten, ten minute recess.
I was just giving you.
Oh, it's two, no.